Lanty. Hello. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for March 25th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Great. Open forum. Is anybody here for open forum? All right. Seeing no one, we will close open forum and we will go right to our appointments. Mr. Shidi is not able to be with us tonight, so you're stuck with Mr. Spagona and I. But we have an update on our financial information from Bartholomew. Do you guys want to come up to the table?
Yes, thank you for having us. Does everyone have? I have printed material. I didn't know if you were.
Do we have that?
It should be in your binders.
Yep, we do.
I'll take one.
Okay.
I'll take one. I usually use that thing.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Is that table further away than?
I actually.
Furniture room? Yeah, you're closer.
Do you mind? Dan Pika, too. He's with the Finance.
Oh, yes.
It might be good for him to grab one of these. Do you need these?
I know you.
That's what this is. Oh, you know what, though? This will be easier to follow than turn in the book.
Well, that's what it is. Oh, my goodness. That's what it is. I have one more, Dan. How are you? It's really nice. We used to work together a long time ago.
Long world.
Well, the financial world.
It is. Yeah, really good.
Public finances anyway.
Yes. Okay. Is everyone else all set?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you so much for having us. I know you have an agenda, so, you know, I don't want to.
Oh, we always have an agenda.
I, yeah. So I.
Some of them are public and some of them are not.
You know what? I agree. Yes, absolutely. So my name is Michelle Newcombe, and I've been with Bartholomew &amp; Company for 13 years. And this is Kathleen Glawaki, and she has been on our investment team for.
Six or seven?
Six or seven years, but she just recently joined our team full-time. So it's really nice to have her on our team. So very quickly, for those of you who, you know, may not be familiar with us, we are in a private investment firm based in Western Massachusetts. We've been in business since 2004, managing municipal funds since 2004. We currently have over 4.4 billion assets under management, of which over 2.8 billion represents municipal funds that we're investing. Over 330 municipal entities across the state of Massachusetts, a little bit in some other New England states, but most of that is in Massachusetts. And so we manage a lot of trust fund money, stabilization, CPA money, scholarship money, as well as OPEB funds, general fund money right now with treasuries being where they are. And we have some, we have some library and scholarship money as well as some state agency money. So we have been working with the town of East Bridgewater since 2010. And what we're going to do is give a, you know, we'll do a quick overview of the performance of these funds and talk a little bit about how they're invested in Mass General Law. There's, there's been some changes. We actually have met with, I met with Megan and Charlie just last week. So we've been having conversation about breaking, we have funds that we're going to break out to invest under Prudent Investor, which is something that we've spoken with in the past with Peter and previous treasurers. So just took a little bit. I know there was a lot of turnover here for a while. And so finally, you know, we're at a point where we can start to discuss this. So please feel free to ask any questions as we go along. And so we will, we will go over the trust funds first. So in Massachusetts, up until this past April, municipalities had to invest these types of funds under Mass General Law, Chapter 4454. So a very restrictive, conservative list of legal, it's called the Massachusetts Legal List of Investments. And, and so these funds are really invested for safety, liquidity, and yield. So most of the money in this account is stabilization money. However, there's about, I would say around 400,000 or so of library scholarships, library money, trust funds, and scholarship money, which the town had passed Prudent Investor. Used to be a process of special legislation, and now it has become, it passed, it went through legislative process, and now all cities and towns can pass it as a local option. However, stabilization cannot be, and CPA cannot be invested under Prudent Investor. So those are still, those still have to adhere to that portion of the law. So as we look at the performance of the trust funds, they have been invested in this very conservative, restrictive list. And so if you open up to page two, you can see the portfolio allocation. So these funds have had a majority of the allocation to corporate bonds of companies on the legal list. We've barbed that with U.S. Treasuries for safety and liquidity. It's just in this past, you know, period of time that we can actually add yield to that. And so that is something that we've been taking advantage of as well. There is an about a, probably about a 10 to 12 allocation to Legalist Equity. That's the common stock, which has appreciated up a bit. And then we have some government agencies, utilize some money markets, and one Legalist Bond Fund account. So down below, you can see the current yield that is being generated. That is just the income that the portfolio is generating. Because the investment of these funds is really for safety, liquidity, yield, in that order, the idea is you want to reserve your principal, you want to make sure that you're protecting your principal and while you're getting a reasonable amount of income and having the proper liquidity when you need it. So if you go to page, go to the next page on page three. I'm going to turn this over to Kathleen. She's going to review the market value and performance summary and talk a little bit more about the fixed income securities in this portfolio and how, how it's performing.
Great. So here on page three, on the left-hand side, for those of you who have it, you can see since 2010 what's been contributed. You know, just about 7.4 million, what's been withdrawn, about 4.8 million. And then you have realized and unrealized gains and losses, interest and dividends. That's to Michelle's point, that's really how these are invested. They're invested for safety, liquidity, and there is the yield. You can see management fees as well. You can see accrued interest, a small credit that was an error, and they just credited back, just a little bit of money back into the account. So a total gain over the life of the funds so far of just over 584,000, which is an annualized return of 1.51%, and that's net of fees as well. And that's very typical return for especially funds with a lot of stabilization in them. We're, you know, we're not here to make them take on a bunch of risk and have them grow or not grow. They need to be there when you need them. And so we're really, as we said, managing them for that income. Right. On the right-hand side of there, you have the fiscal year, all of the same information. For the fiscal year, the portfolio is up over, a little over 3%, which is quite good after, you know, a difficult 2022, 2023. And so far, 2024 has been a lot better. Interest rates rose really aggressively, and now we're kind of at a peak. Just a little bit of commentary around that. We thought about six months ago, we thought that the Federal Reserve would cut interest rates six times this year, and then that turned to three times, and now we're at maybe two times. So we're still in this period of inflation is too high, and interest rates will stay high for a little bit, you know, longer. That's the expectation now. So that's good in a way. It means we can invest in, like Michelle said, treasuries that are paying over 5%. So it's good from that perspective. And so you can really see that here on page four. On the bottom or the right-hand side of this page, you can see the average YTM. That is the yield to maturity. That 4.93% is the real total return of the bonds. That's income. That's if we're buying a bond at a discount. So meaning we buy a bond at $80, it matures at $100. So we're getting that realized gain at the end. So that, you know, it's kind of technical, but that YTM of just under 5%, that's what your bonds are really producing there. Page five, you know, there's a lot of granular detail. I'm happy to answer questions, but just for the sake of time, I'll keep moving through it. But as Michelle said, this is on the legal list. So we're restricted to a short list of equities, but also on the bond side as well. So everything is triple B and above, so everything is investment grade or above. Again, because of the nature of the funds, you can see our duration. All the way to the right, that of about two years. That means that essentially, on average, all of these bonds mature or they have a lifespan of about two years. So really, still quite short in case, of course, you know, the money needs to be utilized. We don't want to be stuck in a 30-year bond and have to sell that, you know, for example. We want things, we want liquidity. We want things to mature.
Right. It is important to have proper liquidity in these portfolios. Should the town vote to use stabilization money, you don't want to be, you know, have things that go too far out maturity and you can't, you know, get to your cash when you need it. So because we've been working with municipalities for so long, we do, we understand the nature of, you know, when cat, when cash is needed. And so we are starting to push out these duration and these maturities just a little bit, you know, enough to hold on to them for a little bit longer, but still make sure that it's, it's not, you know, being locked up for too long.
Page six, just a couple of comments on this. It's kind of our context for how the portfolio has done. So if you look at since inception, as I said, this portfolio has been up year over year about one and a half percent. If you had just owned bonds, so one-to-three-year bonds without any equities, the portfolio would have been up a little bit less, about 1.3%. And then we have inflation in there as well, which has obviously been very high, very, over the past really year, a couple of years, feels like a couple of years at this point. And then we have treasury bills. So to kind of show if this money was in a cash account or a money market, you would have made just under 1%. So we show that because it gives you some kind of context just for how conservative these funds are. They've done quite well relative to how else they could be invested as per the legal list.
Sure. And typically, these funds will do better invested in the long term as opposed to being in a money market type of an account. It's very easy. We get the question all the time from some people who will say, you know, "Oh, but I see all these money market rates and CD rates or whatever, you know, up way over five. Why don't we just, you know, keep it there?" But those, when they've cut rates, those will be the first to fall, and it won't stay that way. So you have to really think about the investment in the more of a long-term perspective.
I'll just skip to page eight just quickly. So here is each calendar year's performance. Every calendar year was positive except for 2022, as we just said. Interest rates rose so aggressively, but you saw 2023 was a really strong year, relatively speaking, kind of coming off of what was a really difficult equity market and bond market. And so far in 2024, the portfolio is up a little bit, but that's what we want, you know, for these types of funds. That's, it really should be slow and steady. You'll see the portfolio returns. You're not getting big double digits, but you're not getting those really tough years. It's really quite stable. That's what we're, we're getting after. And then everything else, so page nine and so on, these are all of the holdings. So I just would point out on page nine, the, we have a very short list of stocks we can buy. This is pretty much all of them. There's one we don't buy, which is GE, because they cut their dividend to zero. And so with the mentality of safety, liquidity, and yield, we didn't want to own, you know, a company that didn't have a dividend. So these are all the equities. It's a very, you know, short list and fairly conservative in that regard, dividend-paying types of companies. And the team just rebalances that. If one, if one company does really well, the investment team will go in, they'll sell some of it, take some gains, rebalance elsewhere. But we keep it based on the sector of the S and P. And then you have all your bonds there as well.
Yeah. So if anyone has any questions on any of the securities, we're happy to answer them. But this, like I said, we've been working, now that Megan is, you know, she's, she's in her role and talking to Charlie, too, you know, we'll, we'll start to work putting a plan into place for some of those funds that are now invested with the stabilization money, like the scholarship funds and the trust funds and library funds, that can now be invested outside of this restrictive list and really grow, you know, for the long term. So we've, we've got a, we've got an agenda for that.
Great.
So any questions on the trust funds? We'll go over the OPEB quickly, and I know we want to be mindful of our time, so.
No, no, I've got it. I'm looking at the list. It's great.
Okay, great. So, so OPEB, it's, so a large portion of this account was, was actually in the trust funds. We had worked, we'd worked together on this. And, and of course, when did we move it over and start the OPEB account? January of 2022, which is the best time to really invest, you know? So, so it's just, I, you know, this is 20- or 30-year money, and this is the money for your retirees' healthcare benefits. So it's important to kind of keep that perspective, you know, when you're just looking at returns. If you go right to page three, I, I know these numbers don't look good right now, but I, I will tell you, this is only going to continue to improve. It just, it needs to rebound from all that happened in the calendar year of '22. So, so when you look on the left-hand side, your historical market value and performance summary since inception, you, that TWR stands for Time Way to Return. That's a total return number. When it's annualized is, it says negative 0.89%, negative 89 basis points. It's actually up to negative .07 as of last night, Friday's business close. But on the right-hand side, you can see that your fiscal year returns of July 1st through February 29th is actually close to 7%. And this actually, once we worked with previous treasurers and, you know, got it to the risk, the more aggressive risk model and putting some alternatives in there to help continue to grow, you would expect to see numbers that are closer, maybe more in the six, just to be, you know, a little more conservative. You would want to see six, six and a half percent. So think of this as like the young person who's starting out in the workforce. They put, they opened up their 401K, and they're, they're just getting started. You know, you're going to have times where markets are up and markets are down. And this just had a rough start. But if you go right to page four, I think if you look at your one-year numbers, you can see how it's, it's really starting to make its way back. It's just going to take a little more time. Our message, we're managing about almost 400, 500 million in OPEB accounts across the state, about 250, and we tell them all, you stay invested, diversify, diversified, keep contributing, and don't panic unless we do. That's really, I mean, you know, it's really, you just have to kind of keep adding to it. And we have very good relationships with actuaries and auditors. And so, you know, when your actuary is, is looking at this and doing the study, they don't get too concerned about a down year or a down, a rough start. They're looking at it from what are you invested in? What, you know, projecting out the long-term expected rate of returns. And, and so you're doing everything that we would recommend in this portfolio, being at a 70, 30 risk profile. So if you go, if you, we don't have to go into, we're not going to talk mutual funds or anything like that unless you want Kathleen to do that. I'm sure she'd be happy to. But, but on page five, it just shows calendar year returns since inception against some benchmarks, just as comparison. I think, you know, as we maybe come back another time, you know, whether it's another six months or even a year, you know, so it'll, it'll look a lot different.
Do you want to add anything to what I had to say about that? No, that was perfect. The, the key is the actuary. I mean, they're project, they're looking forward. So that's, you know, you have done, as Michelle said, there's, we have private equity and real estate in here. That's exactly, you know, how OPEB should be invested at 70, 30. So it's, it's exactly where it should be, and so we feel good about it.
Right?
Yep.
Yeah. Not questions. So as you were talking about the trust, I was going through the fund stuff, right?
Yes.
That's the way I look at it.
Yes.
You know, I wish we knew some years before, you know, we, we happened along the, the opportunity a little late in the game. And of course, you know, to our luck, we hit a market, but everybody, anyone that's got any investment money in, in this, whether it be the retirement or whatever, knows what that year was like. But, you know, certainly the numbers that you, you show here and even some of the, the funds that, that I see that I've invested in myself too personally. So it looks great. You know, I'm looking forward to, you know, you guys working with Charlie and our new group. We apologize for the.
It was just so.
Revolving door, right? That we had. I think I met with maybe three different people and yourself as we moved forward. But this is great. This is exactly what I was hoping for when we started this.
Thank you. Yes. And we'll tell you, East Bridgewater is not the only one who started.
Yeah, right.
There's a couple others, too. So, but we really do value the relationship with the town. We appreciate the, the business. We're always available for, to answer any questions, you know, and we've known Charlie for a while as well. And, and so we, we work to meet with Megan about twice a year, you know, always willing to come in, you know, more or less, whatever she wants, you know, however many times she wants to see us. But, you know, and so we're, we're close by. Well, I'm close by.
Well, I know. I mean, we wanted to sit 10 minutes, something like that.
Yes, yes. I'd say seven. Yeah, if I take back roads, so.
Whitman. Whitman?
Whitman, yes. Used to be a Viking, now I'm Panther, yeah.
No, great. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want an extra copy for anyone at all?
Yeah, David.
Yeah, you know what? If you give it to Rebecca, then she can put it in David's.
Okay. Happy spring. Have a great night. Great meeting.
Thank you.
Hope to see you soon.
Maybe it'll feel like spring one of these days.
I know. I hope so.
It's like winter out there today.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. We will do animal control. Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
Hello.
Do you want to?
This is more or less a check that we haven't, I mean, I thought, I guess people thought it would be good just to see your smiling face.
That's a great idea. Yeah, happy to be here. Thanks for having me.
Want to just give your name for the friends at home?
Ed Gannon, East Bridgewater Animal Control, Animal Inspector. So pretty much everything is status quo. We're working through many different aspects of what we're doing for the town. And basically, it breaks down, there's many different aspects to it. You know, there's the animal control, where we're dealing with a lot of dog issues. When I say a lot, I mean, it's not a ton, but there are, you know, many different aspects of it. Loose dogs. We've had some dog bites in the towns, in the town, and some cat issues that we've been dealing with. We've been getting some pretty good resources with that. We don't really have a lot of resources where we're going to be trapping for feral cats and things like that, but we've been working with Boston Animal Rescue League. Got some good contacts over there, so when we have some issues that seem to be out of control, they can step in, and they have a lot of resources. And, you know, they're technicians. 90% of what they're doing is trapping and treating cats and then putting them back into the area. So that's a good resource for us that we're using. And we assist where we can. And then we kind of have, you know, the roadkill, you know, we're dealing with that. That goes up and down. We're still utilizing the farm in East Bridgewater to dispose of all of that stuff. So they're still up there kind of assisting with that. And we've been in talks with John Haynes from the DPW as to what we may do when that's no longer available. So we have some options. We don't need to deal with that quite yet, but that's kind of, if the farm kind of disappears, then we have to figure out what we're going to do with those. And the biggest issue with that is really the deer, because they're so big in what we're doing with that. So we're burying them right now, which is what's been recommended through Mass Wildlife and other agencies. Other aspects that we're dealing with are the barn inspections. Those are going to come up in the fall. Those all seem pretty straightforward. We've added quite a few to the list where we get some complaints for some roaming chickens. We go check on that, those situations. They're not on our barn list, so we've added about, I don't know, a dozen to the old list. And, you know, as far as everything else goes, we've been working with noise complaints regarding roosters and the agricultural department, and that's all kind of a gray area, so we're just managing that the best we can. And I think everything's going pretty well. And that's about it, pretty much status quo. Nothing, nothing on our, our end that's a problem, so.
Your work with Lakeville is going, is the connection, the connection with Lakeville?
So Lakeville is actually not registered to adopt out nuisance, to adopt out dogs. So we have a couple other shelters that we're working with. One isn't.
More than what we have, I'm not so much worried about the adopted dog, but is, and isn't that what we use if we have a law, a dog that we find out on the streets? Or are we?
So what we've been doing there is we've been utilizing Halifax's shelter, their, their dog shelter over there. We've got that set up pretty good. We've cleaned it up over there, and they're letting us use that. So we actually had a couple of dogs that had got loose in Brockton and showed up in East Bridgewater. So we took them over to Halifax instead of going all, all the way down to Lakeville. And we just kept them there for a day, and then the resident came, picked it up. They deal with the fees through Halifax. So that's been a good, good, good match for us really, because it's just close. And that's just the short stays. We've had some dogs in Halifax that we've kept. You know, we had one dog that we kept for about a week or so because a gentleman had gone into the hospital. So we just, we use that space, and we just take care of the dogs there. It's much more convenient. But we still will use Lakeville if we need to bring a dog somewhere. We're kind of, I mean, we don't have an owner or anything like that. So Lakeville, there's also a shelter in Brockton, like I said, Situate. We have a little list, you know, and we just, if, if one's full, we'll call the other and just go from there, so.
Great. Sounds like you're very busy with all of this.
We're busy, yes. Spring has awakened here, you know, for us and the nuisance wildlife and, you know, the animal control field a little bit as well.
Waiting for the bear to show up again, right?
Don't call me.
We won't.
I, the only question I, well, that we had was the caller for the rooster. Did, did that thing work?
As far as I know, it worked. Yeah, yeah. There were some adjustments made as well as far as when he was letting that rooster out. So instead of, say, 4:30 in the morning, you know, it was a little later. They may have moved that, that pen as well. So we haven't heard anything, so that's good. Thanks for bringing that up. I'll probably get a call tomorrow on it.
I know. I was thinking that, like.
No, but it seems to be going pretty good. There's adjustments made on, on both ends, I think, there. So that was, that was good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I forgot about the call.
Yeah. Yeah, no, you handled that well. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's it. Yeah, so the contract with him is, what, does it run calendar year?
It's, I think, well, every 12 months from March, I think.
Sure. From March, yeah.
From March.
From May 1st, this says.
Well, this is for the inspector.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, there's, there's two different roles, basically, animal control, animal inspector. And I'm not sure exactly where both of them fall.
Yeah, different times a year.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get that straightened out.
Yeah, sure.
Where we're at.
Great.
Do you want to do that action item now while we're sitting here?
Yeah, we might as well sit here. So, yeah, I'll, I'll, the commotion appoint Ed, Ed Junior and Jacob Edward Gannon as Inspector of Animals for the period May 1st, 2024 through April 30th, 2025.
I will second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
Thank you.
You're official.
That was easy. Thank you.
Thanks for all you're doing.
Guys, have a great night. Guys, have a great night. Thank you.
You too. All right, bud. We'll talk to you.
Take care.
Thanks.
All right. We got a couple of minutes for a public hearing. Do you want to do that?
Let's do six.
Why ever would you like us to discuss that, chief? All right, are we ready to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion and vote on the side letter of agreement between the Town of East Bridgewater and the East Bridgewater Firefighters Union Local Two Seven Six Eight.
The concept being the chief can, you know, provide more detail. But the idea here is that we would, the chief would be able to bring in experienced firefighters and EMTs into the department, but they would not start at the base level salary in the sense of, we would look at their years of service with other departments and adjust their pay and leave benefits accordingly.
Anything you want to add?
That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Was this also with the training? Did, did that have some?
Yeah, also if they, if they have five years full-time experience, a pro board firefighter went through certified, they would not have to go to the Mass Fire Academy.
Which is a money saver for us too, right? Isn't it? Does it cost to send them?
Either ten weeks of running short or ten weeks of overtime. So like four hundred and sixty hours of overtime.
Okay. All right.
All right, let me have a motion.
Any further questions? I'll, I'll second. Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. It's a miracle. And it is six thirty on the dot. So we can go to our public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Peter, do you want to read the notice?
Sure. Notice hereby given that the Select Board of Town of East Bridgewater shall hold a hearing to determine what, nope, that's not it.
It's because it's a continued hearing, so it's
It is continued.
So we're not doing the school.
No, we're doing the hearing. The school is after the hearing. Liz just happened to walk in right
Right. Yeah, I saw, saw some in their faces.
Nope.
Okay, so anyways, going back to the Town of East Bridgewater shall hold a hearing to determine whether Class Two, Class Three license at the three hundred Thatcher Street, All Foreign Auto Sales Service, Inc., and All Foreign Auto Salvage, Inc. shall be revoked and/or not renewed due to failed inspections of unsafe working conditions at said establishment. The hearing will be held at Town Hall, Main Conference Room, East Bridgewater, Mass. O two three three three, at six forty-five P M. On Monday, January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Mr. Ferry, how are you tonight?
Good, fine, thank you.
Nice to see you back.
Thank you. Nice to be back.
Is it?
No.
What is this? This third time?
Is it though nice?
Well, we have good news, so it is nice.
Okay, good. What's the, what's the good news?
I think there was confusion the first time. We didn't have everybody here and then we did have the hearing.
We continued and then, yep. So what's, what's the good news?
We're done.
Yeah?
We got accepted.
Yeah, all right. Chief? Chief Haren?
So I inspected the business today. And, yeah, he's, for the most part done. There's a couple of minor items that, just waiting on a contractor. Electrician for a few things and the waste oil heater. I just wait for a contractor to get that up and running a hundred percent. He did a remarkable job inside the building itself to make it safe for firefighters or anybody else who has to go in there. He has a plan still for the outside that he still has to go, I guess they had a public hearing, but it was canceled with the plan, not a public hearing. He had to be in there planning, but it was canceled.
Oh, okay.
For whatever reason, postponed. So he still has to go through with that to adjust his license.
Right, but that's not what this
No, it's taken into account. But it's going to help him in the long run.
It's for the zoning permits.
Yes.
Right. So I see no reason why the board would revoke his license at this time. And kind of weird is he doesn't, he never received a license this year.
Well, because it was
It was, you were holding it and issuing it.
I was mistaken. I thought it was issued and this was a revocation. So I see no issue why we can't issue that license.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Peter?
No, I'm good.
That was the, that was the thing to go over, the hurdle.
Okay. Want to make a motion to issue the license? We can do that.
I will.
Right?
All right. Make a motion to issue license, the Class Two, Class Three license, three hundred Thatcher Street, All Foreign Auto Sales Service, Inc., and All Foreign Auto Salvage, Inc.
And I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you. You'll be mailing out the licenses maybe soon?
Rebecca?
Yep.
I need them for the registry for the first of the month, if possible.
Yeah, we should be able to get it out to you tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Be good.
Getting that all set.
The place made the place much better.
That's good.
Mr. Ferry, would you prefer to come and get it or would you like us to mail it?
If you have it ready tomorrow, I'll come and get it.
Okay, we'll call you.
Thank you. Have a nice night, guys.
All right. Thank you. All right, we have eleven minutes. We can't, you have to bear with us. Want to do some action items?
Sure. Approve the minutes of the January eleventh, twenty twenty-four Select Board's meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Prove but not release the minutes of the March eleventh, twenty twenty-four Select Board Executive Session Meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss and vote on the surplus request from the Library Director, Jessica Henderson, to surplus furniture for the Historical Room at the Library.
I will second for discussion purposes. Charlie, I know we talked about this. Do you want to pass on this until we have a place for it?
Well, I guess there's a couple of possibilities. One is in fact that the town simply wants to surplus it. We do need to change the Select Board's policy on surplus property under five thousand. It doesn't allow right now for donations to nonprofits. And I think there's an interest by the friends on accepting it. So I, we, if we wanted to, we could continue this to April eighth. And we could first get a policy in place and then as the next action item after that, be able to vote to surplus the property and agree to, for the donation to the friends. Unless, I mean, it's a nice piece of furniture relatively speaking, unless we wanted to put it up. The only place I can think of in the building here is the second floor where we have some other pieces up there.
You don't have any particular use.
Yeah, there's no utilitarian use that I can think of.
Okay, we'll just wait until we can change that policy.
Okay, that's over. Let's see. If I approve the transfer of Class Two license at sixty-eight Old Bedford Road from Marcus Motor Cars, Inc. to Purple Lady Sales and Service.
Second. Discussion?
There are no issues. The Department heads don't have any issues. However, I told her to be here at seven, because I thought we were doing
She should have probably known that before.
So she will be coming at seven and also number eight will be here around seven.
Okay, so we can go back to that.
All right.
Just skip that. We'll skip eight.
We did six.
Yep.
We did six, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, bouncing around, let's go to seven.
Seven.
Yes. Discussion and possible vote on land donation located in Washington Street, map thirty-seven parcel two.
Second. Charlie?
I would recommend that in fact the board accept the parcel. Elsewise, we'll probably end up going through tax title foreclosure, which is always more expensive for the town to go through than the simple acceptance. And there have been no objections from the departments for the acceptance of the property.
Okay.
Where is this? Where?
So there's a map in your
Here.
So you have Crescent and Washington.
Okay.
Just north on the east side of Washington Street from the intersection of Crescent and Washington. It's actually across the street from those parcels that we were
We already did, right?
Where we, we decided to pass on those, yeah.
That's why I was confused, so. A different owner, a different, really.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Nine, we better hold off on that. A little discussion, because I think, I think Kevin's Riley's
Yeah, so he's the number, the number eight as well.
Yeah, so we'll hold off on nine. Ten, approving request from the East Bridgewater Garden Club for the use of electronic sign from May seventeenth, twenty twenty-four through May twenty-fifth to advertise the Garden Club plant sale. Commuted upon availability.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. So you, who, who does that go through? Like, does that, do you just call John Haynes?
We asked, yeah, we asked John Haynes if they have a sign available.
Okay.
So they may not be able to have it. They may have to take it away.
All right.
Yeah.
So you'll talk to John?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see. Approve the request from Veterans Agents for the use of the Town Common in the Town Hall Parking Lot on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four from Royal Day Services from nine A M. till twelve P M. Rain date, May twenty-sixth.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The Board will vote that the Select Board Chair of the Town of East Bridgewater is authorized to execute and deliver the feasibility study agreement for the Central School Project with the Massachusetts School Board Authority and any amendments thereto on behalf of the town to bind the town to its terms and conditions and to make final binding decisions on behalf of the town with respect to the proposed project described in the feasibility study agreement and any amendments thereto.
Second. Didn't we already do this?
You pre, the Board had previously approved the feasibility study and signed it as the Board. What this does is allow Carol, whoever the chair is at the time, if for instance, we have amendments to the agreement, because this is going to be, I think, something on the order of eighteen to twenty-four months of work. So there are amendments. We can rapidly deal with getting the approval from the chair and getting everything back up to MSBA.
So that will stay with the chair?
Yes.
But the appointment on the committee follows me?
Yes.
Even though I won't be chair after the election this year?
Less the, well, because the appointment is with, from the school department, not from the
Well, they might not want me anymore if I'm not chair.
They can have that discussion later.
Okay, so, but this part follows
Yes.
Whoever the chair of our Board is, which we rotate, so, okay, makes sense. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I've got.
There were no additional action items tonight, right?
Oh.
Six forty announcements. Rebecca?
I do. It came to our attention that the East Bridgewater gymnastics team will be going to the New England's for the first time in program history.
Congratulations to them.
Which is great news for them. At the end of February, the Brockton East Bridgewater Spelman Gymnastics Team plays fourth at the MIAA South Sectional Tournament, qualifying them for states. This marks the first time in the program's history that the team advanced to the state's tournament.
Awesome.
Following the state tournament, biking sports parents shared the news that they will now compete in the New England's for the first time.
Congratulations to them. That's awesome.
That's it for me.
Thank you. You want to hold off?
Sure.
On town, you're just doing
Yeah, I mean, I, in terms of the budget, you know, we, we've got most of the budgets in, obviously. It is a challenging year for the town, but we're not any exception for that. I mean, we were sharing information about what was happening over with the Silver Lake School District as an example. We know what our friends to, in the city there, what they're facing, obviously, far worse problems. So we'll, you know, our financial team's working. Finance is going to be here to hear the school presentation. They'll be hearing other presentations from other departments tomorrow that will finish that segment of their work. And then I hope is in early April, they'll be able to really quickly come up with a series of budget recommendations to bring the town meeting, but also bring that information to the town departments so that they'll have if there's need for further discussions, then we'll have an ability. It won't be at the last minute.
Okay. Well, it's six forty-two. The chair declares it's close enough. So if our friends from the school committee would like to come up and present the FY twenty-five budget.
Do you want the clicker?
Complete with visuals.
Do you want?
They have ones. Do you want one, Peter?
I can, I've got one on
Yeah, we got a ring.
Appreciate that.
Do I have one?
Yes.
All right.
Michael, uh
Can I have one of those? I don't think I have.
I think you have one in your book. It's under the appointments.
Oh, never mind.
I'll grab it while you're standing here. I'll make you feel
Might give them both of those.
Something, right? All that printing.
I'm sorry, what?
There were some questions that were sent up last week, so that we answered them and then we then we sent them back to Mr. Pika and
Okay.
Rebecca, I think we pushed them out to everybody, but it's a hard copy as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mike? Okay, welcome. Thank you, come.
Thank you. So I know that we're going to, for FinCom Capital, we just came down from Capital. I went through a series of projects that we have and explained a few things to Capital. I think that that went well. I know that FinCom is here this evening, Selectmen, the Select Board is here, and we thought that it would be advantageous for time for everybody to be in the same room at the same time, hearing the same message. And that's why we sent the presentation out prior, because we've already went through the full presentation.
Right.
I think going through it again, you know, it's a long ti, it's, you know, forty slides and this, that. But we can certainly do it however we want or just ask some questions or go to the, the slides that we have that you think that are most important or some of the questions that were asked. I know that FinCom is in the room and that they may have some more additional questions for us. We've brought everything that we, we think that you would need.
Okay. I think however you want to do it, and I agree, you don't need to go through the whole presentation.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a level service budget. We have done everything that we can up to this point. I think that what we brought to the presentation for, for the budget hearing two weeks ago at the Mitchell School, I think it, it shows that we've done our due diligence. I don't think we're the only school department in the, in the Commonwealth that is up against the inflation of special ed, the transportation costs, salary increases trying to get people to work, and staffing issues. We're running out of the ESER grant is going to be over this year. We're, we're trying to get those people and that staffing and, and those projects and, and everything that we've used ESER for from the P P Es to the equipment, to the staffing that we had. And hopefully we'll be able to get those into our budget operational over the next few years and, and bring them back in. We do not have extra staff. We're actually down instructional support assistance for our neediest students. For students, those with I E Ps. Individual Educational Plans. And we're down nurses. We are hiring them as quickly as we can. We just hired one last week. They have to get two weeks' notice. So we're, we're down a nurse for three weeks. We're, we're holding on with the nurse of building, but there are a lot of issues. The needs and the supports that students need today are far greater than they were three years ago, two years ago, a year ago. The emotional support that we need to give students and the needs that the students need at this time for, for social and emotional is far outweighing any, anything that I believed that I would see in my career at thirty-one years. Whether it was COVID, whether it's social media, whether it's the constant cellphone usage of the screen and screen time for students, I don't know what it is. But we have, it is just the amount of issues that we see. And the students trying to navigate, being a teenager, being an eight-year-old is far more significant than we ever thought. And the inflation rate in special needs and in transportation has just, it's, it's out of control. It's out of control.
Well, it's certainly out of your control.
Yeah. It's out of, you know, and, and the state, I mean, we got an increase of fifty-eight thousand dollars from our Chapter Seventy funding last year to this year. And we apply for every grant that's out there and we continue to apply for grants. And so with that being said, I think that any questions that you have for us and why, why we need the support and the funding, I think that we'll entertain that at this, at this time.
Yeah. No, it's certainly, you know, we've been hearing it for months from everybody, right? It's a challenging budget year for your department, for all the town department, across the town. Nobody's going to get out of this one without some level of something. So we appreciate you coming in and I have a feeling you probably have better questions than I do at this point, but maybe not.
No, I mean, you know, I just went to the meeting at, at the presentation. I was there. David was there as well as
I was at work.
Yep, you were working, right?
I did have a trustees meeting that night.
Yep. So, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the questions, you know, are straightforward. I mean, all the questions, a lot of the answers that you gave were straightforward. I mean, transportation's, of course, special ed, picking up of students and, you know, whether they be homeless or foster care, what have you. It all makes sense. There's no doubt about it. it. I guess I would say, you know, past the beginning to finance, to see, you know, what, I did get a chance to go through some of the questions that they had asked. You know, so we rely on, obviously, Charlie first and foremost, as he communicates, and Rebecca, to communicate with finance as well as with Capital, find out where we're at. So, I'd be interested just to see what some of the answers were there, you know, how they pertain to what their thoughts are going forward. And then, you know, we'll just kind of go from there. But before we start, do we know where the number, where are we at as far as a total number? I mean, we've heard two or three different numbers, so it was.
Inclusive of regular transportation, one point, an increase of one point, one million three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-five.
And percentage-wise, you know, up top, you had that, what that would be roughly?
Yep.
A little over five.
The questions, where did those questions come from?
Mr. Pika?
Okay.
Five point three, five point three-nine percent.
Thank you. So, I mean, I don't know if you want to just kind of, I think there was a few, Dan, that the finance came up with, or yourself.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand a little bit more about the, how the cost share is handled on homeless transportation. Is there like an accounting for that anywhere? Say we do share the cost, where do we see that?
If we do share the cost, we are only billed half of the cost of the transportation, so only half of the expense shows up on our financials.
Do we know what percentage of students that we're transporting that are homeless that we do share costs with the whole district?
Percentage-wise, it would take me a minute. How many? Right now, it's two. Two. So, two out of thirteen? Two out of thirteen?
Or shared?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's some sort of formula with that, right? I mean, they have to be, spoken with Gina regarding it. It's like, they don't, all of them, you don't share in every single student, because.
What did you talk about at Sunday dinner?
Yes, yes. Nothing better to talk about, so we decided to talk about.
We share in two out of thirteen.
Right. But I mean, the other ones can't be shared because of, is there a reason for that? I mean, I thought there was a.
If they're placed by, I don't.
Aye, good to see.
If they're placed by DCF.
Right.
Then we can't cost share.
That's right.
If they're in a shelter home situation or a shelter situation, then we can cost share with that other community.
I knew there was something, there was a reason.
Dan, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Do you have more questions? I don't want to put you on the spot if you had, we're waiting, did you guys have a meeting with FinCom too, or not? This is it?
This is it.
This is it, okay. All right, then I'm not putting him on the spot.
Nope. You may not be able to give me a specific answer on this, but I just want to point a reference so I can understand it a little bit better, on where I could find more information on the regulations about the use of the food service revolving fund.
I can certainly share those with you.
Okay.
I can send you Deb Lahn's information as well.
Okay.
She's on top of it, and she's on with Desi constantly.
David, did you have any questions? I know you just met.
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping we have another meeting besides this. But, I guess, given the financial situation that the town's in, and they've done some good work bringing it down to, I think it was what, we mentioned one point three million or something at this point in time, at like eight percent, is it eight percent?
The increase, five? Five point three.
That's the overall increase. And it was a level services budget. In preparation, as we look at things, I'd like to understand some potential impact statements if we can't fund that. I'm not saying that we can't, but I'd really like to understand the impact if we can only afford a three percent or a four percent. Granted, five and a half percent is a lot different than when we were a while ago, but I'd like to be able to understand it as we make recommendations and work finance. I'm sure folks at home would be interested in understanding what the impacts would be.
Yep. Are you prepared to answer a question like that? I mean, is that?
Well, they have to do it right now.
We've been putting it together.
I imagine you've run all the scenarios that you've had to anyway, so, but it might not be something you want to talk about either, so that's up to you.
I think we could bring it back to the Budget Subcommittee to go over some things and report back as quickly as we can.
We are in negotiations with four units, so I would prefer not to.
Yep.
At this time.
Yep, understood.
You know, I'm not saying that we're looking at a level funded budget. I know there's been salary increases, et cetera, things like that, so I'd like to see what could be the least impacted of we have to go there.
That's their question, I mean, you know. What would it look like? I mean, we've talked about it before, right? When we've had these kinds of situations, where do you lose? I'm assuming salary, that would be teachers, right from the, right from the start, but, you know, who knows? I mean, so I guess that would be something we, you know, rely on you guys to kind of tell us what your thoughts are, if that's the direction that we have to go in.
We don't also know, I mean, I'm not privy to exactly what, and I know you guys share the information, as to some of these accounts, like the food account, the building account, et cetera, all that, you know, what's in there, is any of that being used, et cetera, things like that. Also, keep in mind that this year, we still have a little road here, we've got four more years of this, so we don't want to cut off our nose despite our face right now in the first year.
David, when you say four more years of this.
The Plymouth County retirement, it's going to always have a significant impact on us for the next four years, unless something changes.
Could I ask a question of that? So, next year, we have a Plymouth County retirement assessment of approximately four million dollars. The year after that, four point four million, the year after that, four point six million, the year after that, five million, the year after that, five point three million, and in fiscal year, thirty-three hundred thousand. So, this four million dollars of Plymouth County retirement assessment is included as an expense in our budget. If we didn't have that, would we be in good shape?
We'd be in a lot better shape than we.
Be in better shape.
Let me tell you.
Four million dollars is a lot of money. So, as I understand it, the Plymouth County Retirement Plan Association started in nineteen thirty-seven. So, for eighty-six years, towns have been underfunding this retirement plan.
Well, I think, isn't, that's more OPEB, isn't it, than Plymouth County retirees at all the same considerations?
No, two different things.
Yeah. So, the underfunding.
So, basically, the system has never been, for Plymouth County, the system has never been fully funded. The cities and towns that are, the districts that are in Plymouth County have kicked the can down the road, saying, okay, you know, we'll try and get fully funded by year X, and then year Y. Currently, they're aiming for twenty thirty. I mean, I was, I would say it was in Halifax, sorry, ninety-six, it was a lot earlier date, it was somewhere in the teens, I think, back then, that they were aiming for. We're only somewhere around sixty percent fully, you know.
Right.
Funded right now.
So, this eighty-six-year problem, Plymouth County is asking towns to fix it in?
Five years.
Well, in the next five years, but they've been aiming, they've been on this road for several years before that.
Right. So, we have enough money, revenue coming in, in fiscal year twenty-five, to cover our fiscal year twenty-five expense. Give or take us.
Well, we have to, for Plymouth County retirement, we have to.
Excluding that.
No, we don't.
Even without that, we still have.
The requests that have come in from all the departments combined are something, are more than one, more, closer to two million dollars above what we expect for revenues in fiscal twenty-five.
So, a two million, two million dollar problem is a lot better than a six million dollar problem.
Yeah.
So, I think the town could come together on that two million dollar problem, but we're being asked to pay for a liability that's been eighty-six years in the making. And it, and we've got four more years of it, of increasing. We're not going to be in financial dire straits if we don't figure something out.
Well, we're going to be in financial, by straits that, I'll put this, we're going to have to be very, very conservative during the next four years. Even no matter what we end up doing with fiscal twenty-five, we have the same prob, we're likely to have the same problems during the next four years, because we have the three sources of revenue. We have local aid, which when net, and you got, not you, but the town got fifty-eight thousand from Chapter Seventy, but net, when all the local aid was calculated and all our assessments were counted, we netted less than thirty thousand dollars. And that's now our sixty-one, sixty-two million dollar budget, which means that our local aid is, doesn't count, it's, doesn't count for anything. Our local receipts were increasing slightly, but again, that's not a big part of our budget. It's all relying on the property taxes. So, we have, in future years, unless we have some large projects come online, we're looking at a bit more than a million dollars a year, one point one, one point two million dollars a year, for the proposition two and a half increase and new growth combined. So, all that one point one, one point two, in future years, we've still got to fund increases in special ed and the school bus contract, and retirement, and health insurance, let alone all our contractual obligations.
Which, which leaves basically nothing.
Correct.
Right.
So, we're looking at four or five years of cuts?
Well, there won't be cuts necessarily, but they, you know, it depends on how everything pans out in terms of contracts and such. What we're looking at is very, very small, if any, increases in most of the budgets, yes, right now.
So, pardon me for maybe speaking out of turn. I guess, from my view, if we want to keep this town, I mean, from my view, it sounds like the whole town's going to be basically at a standstill for the next four or five years.
Hmm, yes.
If not worse.
Unless, unless the financial conditions change, yes.
And I don't see how that's sustainable for any department in town, never mind the schools. So, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, is there, are there any plans to help? Is, are there any ideas being floating, floated around to kind of help ease the burden of this?
Well, as, you know, we went through the three sources. We're not going to get any more money from Boston. They don't have any money, obviously. I mean, their revenues are down, certainly from the projections, and certainly not reaching where they were hoping to be for the year we're in now. Our local receipts, most of that is motor vehicle, more than anything else. It's the normal, it's a standard charge, we can't, we're not going to collect anything more, but it's going to be material local receipts. That leaves property taxes, okay? The only way we're going to see a significant increase, again, of, other than a new develop, you know, significant new developments every single year during that span, is a prop two and a half override. When I've ever brought that subject, I've basically given the stare and saying, not in East Bridgewater. And I, you know, that was one of the three options, either, and that was the third option, and there's been no enthusiasm for doing that.
I just worry, like, we talk about contracts being the main place where we can solve these problems, right? If we are offering low contracts, who are we going to get to work in any of our town apartments?
Yes.
I just, I see this as a really concerning problem as a resident, as a parent. I just, it's scary to me.
Well, and we're not, as we said earlier, East Bridgewater's not unique in that situation.
Is Bristol County having, are there any other counties in Massachusetts that are having this retirement assessment problem?
Oh, yeah. I mean, there are, most community, whether they're regional or individual towns, most communities are not fully funded at this point. Springfield, for instance, is all the way down at forty percent of what they need. And I'm sure, I would bet they're trying to aim for twenty forty, but they're going to be under the gun to reach that, even if, with an additional ten years, as an example.
So, you say fund at a hundred percent?
Yes.
By twenty forty?
Because under state statute, every single retirement system in the Commonwealth must be fully funded by twenty forty. The various systems have the option of doing it at an earlier date. Plymouth County has said, and they met with the Select Board four months ago, five months ago.
Yeah, it was in the fall.
To talk about the possibility of pushing that date, but there's no interest from Plymouth County about doing that. They are aiming to get this done and get it done by twenty thirty. And we cannot override them in that decision.
I mean, we did have the men to talk to them about it, and.
Do they know that the impact that this is happening to?
Yes.
Yeah, we.
They know, and they don't care? That we're going to have.
I don't, I don't think they don't care. I think they care, but they also think that it'd be better for the cities and towns to get this done and get it finished, and be able then to have that money available in twenty thirty to extend it, because in, it's sort of like with a mortgage, and extending your mortgage, instead of doing a twenty-year, you do a thirty-year, you end up paying more money, because you're paying the interest, your principal's going down a slower rate over that time, so you're paying more in interest.
That was basically what they told us. Yeah, David, go ahead.
This is something we dealt with back in the early two thousands, and the city and town almost went into receivership. But this is a classic case, and the things we've been talking about for years, of the repercussions of what you do today, tomorrow. I, we knew the board, we knew the town wasn't fully funded, and it wasn't mandated, so we needed money for other things, so we spent that on those things, and we didn't pay the complete amount until the pension amount. We knew that, everybody knew that in order to balance the budget. Then the mandate came down, the legislation passed, that we, it has to be fully funded. So, is there a plan? There are things in the works, to answer your question a little bit, there are things in the works to look at potential revenue, like the land sale, et cetera. I see this board has been very aggressive on trying to do things along the sewer path, et cetera. So, there's a lot of stuff going on in the background. And my concern, my only concern here, and that's why I asked for an impact statement, what it is, is my biggest concern is if we do something crazy this year, it's going to really hurt us twice as much next year. So, at that time, twenty-something years ago, I know I was only fifteen at the time, but we had a plan. I mean, we, we had, was it here? We had to do some reductions. We knew we were doing them, we had to do them, we reduced hours at town hall, and we asked for budget cuts, and we put in from the stabilization fund fifty percent of that. Remember, that was in and out. That was a plan that we had and we used. But, we can, don't say I ever said this, but we could use the stabilization fund, okay, but not, not too much in the first year, because then it's just going to be really dramatic, three years from now, we'll have to have like twice as many cuts, et cetera. So, this gives us some time for these folks to do their job and work, and for us to maybe solicit, you know, our representatives for some additional state aid or funding or project. But, it's not the end of the world. We've gotten through very tough times before. I know sitting here today, thinking about four years and what's going to happen, but I do want to clarify one thing that John said, I think we might have misunderstood his question, or I misunderstood his question. We're paying what, four million dollars this year into? And if we had a two million dollar shortfall, if we didn't have the four million dollars to pay, we wouldn't have a shortfall. So, I think the question got a little confused there.
Turned around, yeah.
Yeah. So, but we have to pay it. And so, bottom line is, at some point in time down the road, twenty twenty-nine or twenty thirty, that big chunk we're paying there is going to be available for us here. We just got to work together and figure out, how do we get through these next four years? When is the appropriate time to use stabilization fund money? You know, if we raided the capital stabilization fund right now, we wouldn't be putting a turf field down, can't. So, you know, we got to put all the pieces together. And I think, a lot happens over a year, with these guys working on their stuff, and Charlie doing his, and the finance group always looking towards the future. Hopefully, we'll be gathering a pathway for next year. I mean, you've done a great job getting it down to five and some odd percent, but, you know, we're going to, we'll get there, trust me, we were.
Why did we ever think David was going to be the optimist in the room? Anybody who got on their bingo card in twenty twenty-four? Because I didn't.
We went through it, and people don't know that.
We have been through it.
We went through that.
But these guys have been through it too, they know.
Yeah, it was bad. It was really bad.
And I think Melanie fell off her chair when you said raid stabilization.
No, no, we're not. No, no, no.
Remember, this is all recorded, Mr. Walsh.
I was telling you, I'm going to tell you, I honestly believe at some point in time, not this year, hopefully, from the numbers I've run, maybe year three, we're using stuff from the stabilization fund, but it would kill us.
Well, and if we use it and we don't have it to put back, which we don't have.
But we can continue to work on things and initiatives to increase the revenue. We don't know what's going to happen with the land sales, we don't know what's going to go in there for property tax, and there's a whole bunch of stuff out there, so.
Well, I want to keep us on track and focused on school budget, so, is there, are there any other questions directly for our representatives from school? Peter, anything?
Uh, yeah, just to touch on that, so Paul is in the room too, because I, I mean, it is important what David's saying, but I think more important is for them to understand from our side of the table as well, right? understand from our side of the table as well, right? So, we're dealing with fire, we're dealing with the police, we're dealing with DPW as well, looking for the best advantage, and, and the question is, like, where, where are we going from here? You know, it's, it's a great question. And just so that you, you realize, and me and Paula talk all the time, you know, there's a lot going on in town, there really is. I mean, there's, you know, if anyone drives down Route eighteen and can't see that massive building that's sitting there, right? I mean, there's, so there's tax money coming in from there, we've got, what, two hundred thousand square feet of building going up over at Shaw's Warehouse. I mean, there, there's things that we're doing in the negotiations, but I will tell you this, from the time that I came and joined this board, three and a half years, four years, whatever it was, municipal government sucks.
I know.
The worst. It is absolute worst, it's so slow, you know, to do this, and this is the first time I've said this, right? Rebecca will tell, Carol will tell you. So, the frustrating part for us is the fact that when we try to do something, we've been negotiating with National Grid, just on an easement in that area for a, almost a year. I mean, it's, it's just, so the timing of what we'd like to see happen in that development to start to grow has, has been pushed back a tremendous amount of time. You know, I felt like we would have been somewhere much differently today, i- if you ask me, a year and a half ago than, than we are. Uh, you know, we're still on the path, you know, we've still got our seven million dollars in grant money, we've still got things working out as far as the easements go and, and things of that nature. So, I see an increase, and Paula will tell you the same thing, Central Street, you see some housing going up down there, the development we're talking about, also going on the opposite side, so we, we've got areas that, that are happening, it's just happening at a, a slower rate than we can keep up with, you know, and, and that's really the issue, so...
Well, and even when you see growth, you don't see it in money, you know, in dollar signs?
Right, right away.
For another fiscal year or two, even.
Yep. So, I mean, I think everything what we ask, and that leads me to my last question, everything we ask, whether it be to the schools or to any of the other departments, are just things that have come up during the year that we, we hope to, you know, will impact the budget in some way. And the only thing else that I came up with, and I spoke to Dan a little bit about, was the transportation, so the buses. We, we bought a couple of vans a couple of years ago, dug out some, some emails, we were hoping that that would maybe take some of the, has that done any, anything at all? Has that moved in any direction? Have we seen?
We have the vans.
Okay.
Uh, they're on the road. Some of our special needs programs do go out on, on field trips. We're trying to, I have, I don't know if you, what, looked at School Spring, I don't know, looked at Indeed, but I'm looking for a van driver, a full-time van driver, so that we could be bringing kids to more transitional opportunities, the sports teams, and that, then that brings in an insurance issue and liability issue that we'll, we'll, we'll come up with when we get to there. But, yeah, we, we use them as much as we possibly can.
Do they help with the homeless, or the, or the...
We don't have a van driver.
Okay, so that's what...
That's, that's the issue. So, we had a van driver, and he had to stop and take care of his home.
All right, okay.
So, we are, it is posted, I'm hoping to have one, and hopefully have one for next year, so that we can pick up. It would be really the, the students that are in, in district pick up.
Right.
Because there, that's, it's those two hundred dollar trips, or those hundred and fifty dollars every day. It would save us a tremendous amount by the end of the year by picking, you know, a couple of students up. You know, you have, you know, four or five students in a van that are from East Bridgewater and picking them all up, where a purple lady might pick up on the east at the end, next to, or at the west, next to West Bridgewater, but she's also picking up three kids from West Bridgewater. She's dropping off West Bridgewater, then taking us, and then bringing us back. Or, you know, who else we, uh, Bill's, Bill's Taxi, you know? He might be on the other side and, and doing Whitman Hansen, three kids and us, too. So, we're sharing, if we could get a bus, if we could get a van driver, that, the staffing is, is incredibly hard to bring in.
So, if you could get that, do you have an idea of what maybe estimated, what the cost breakdown would be, or...
Is that just a regular license?
No.
Seven D license.
Seven D.
Yeah.
And we, and we offered that, I mean, we paid for...
Four, three teachers?
Four teachers to get the seven D. They're taking their students out, they take them on field trips, they're taking them to, you know, different places, like financial literacy in the IEP, with, with students of special needs to go out and understand, you know...
Which is great.
Yeah, to do some, to do some things.
But that's not having with the transportation costs.
Yeah, and we were hoping to use it for like our smaller teams, you know, tennis or...
You need a driver.
Golf.
This year, we're experiencing about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in homeless and foster care transportation. Next year's budget is two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
So, if Liz doesn't get any bus drivers, then...
You'll drive it.
We'll be driving it.
All right.
So, we have, we have included a, a cut in expense in next year's budget.
Right, yeah.
I also put it on, I also put it on Parent Square.
Yeah.
When we, when we are, we don't get anybody, I put it on Parent Square and send it out to the community, if anybody would like to come in and apply for a position, and come right into our office, my office, and, and apply.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be a tremendous asset to the district.
Yeah, I went back to the emails, it certainly, you know, was, it was, the idea was definitely there. I mean, everybody agreed with, with the purpose.
And we bought those from North River Collaborative at a, you know...
Discount rate.
Yeah. And that's was the whole, I think the whole idea was to hopefully pick up those in, in-house kids and then use them in our transitional programs and, and then after-school sports.
Yep. Well, we'll talk to Mr. Shidi, because, you know, maybe we can, instead of him sitting up here for the hour.
Yeah.
John, get your seven D.
All right, that's it for me. Like I said, we, we want to see, obviously, the school funded, you know, got relationships there, as, as everyone knows, so, you know, we, we just want to make sure that each department gets what we can, we can afford to do going forward. We rely on these guys over here to, you know, kind of give us the ideas of, the purposes of what, what that is and what that isn't, but appreciate where you've been so far.
Let's get somebody in here with a bucket of money. Thank you, thanks for your time, thanks for your...
Nine hundred million for the check.
The work that you did.
Yeah, 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 we could just put a bunch of money on the, what is it, what is tonight's? Is it the...
I don't know if it's Powerball.
Powerball tonight?
Yeah, somebody win that Powerball.
Yeah, you won't see them here. They won't...
We'll just dump it right in town, too.
Yeah, right, right.
If I won, I would give some of that to the town. I'm not saying I'd give it all, but I'd give you some. All right, where were we? Number five? Number five.
Uh, yes, five.
The transfer of the license.
Yep, 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 yep.
Yep.
Um, approved the transfer of the class two license at sixty-eight Old Bedford Road from Ake's Motor Cars, Inc.
Hello.
To Purple Lady, Sales and Services.
And I will second.
How are you?
Good, how are you? And you must be Purple Lady, Sales and Services. All right, and we're transferring this license, and Rebecca, you said everything was all...
Yep, we got approvals from all the departments.
Okay. Any questions?
Uh, just, so, name change only, or is, is the management change and everything, or...
Yeah, ownership change.
Ownership change, too?
Yeah, they're retired.
All right, oh, all right. Um, no, I mean, maybe, are you part of the, the business yourself, or is...
Yeah, I'm the owner.
Okay. How many, how many, other than you? Is it just you?
No, no, I have a team.
Okay.
Yeah.
And where you, where have you been located prior to this location?
Um, East Grove Street in Middleborough, fifty-five.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Nice. Yeah?
Okay, all right, great. Well, thank you for, for coming in and for waiting for us to get to it, and...
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a, a motion to approve the, the transfer of the license.
And I will second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
All right, good luck there.
Congratulations, good luck with it.
Thank you.
We'll call you tomorrow about either picking up your license or mailing it.
Awesome, thank you.
Number...
Okay, now, seven.
Seven.
No, we did seven, sorry, eight, number eight.
Yeah, yeah, I'm moving down, sorry. Eight.
Eight and nine.
Evan?
Yep, review town meeting articles submitted by the planning board, vote to, vote to four? Vote for, recommend, I guess, to the planning board to...
Well, you, you don't have, even have to recommend, you're, it's a procedural thing, but Kevin can be here to explain.
Okay. Hello?
Good evening.
What do you have for us?
Uh, we have, at present, I believe, four articles that want to go into the warrant, three of which I can talk to fairly intelligently, one perhaps not, because it's a Roy Gardner creation, but I do have some info on it.
I don't think that was any, any commentary on Roy.
No, 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 just... So, basically, two of the articles have to do with amendments to the zoning bylaw, three of them actually, zoning, well, they all have the zoning bylaws, actually, two of them. Site plan approval is section thirteen of the zoning bylaws. The intention there is to replace the entire existing bylaw with the text that's been submitted. Purpose, threefold, really. One is to better define what's expected of an applicant when they are filing, in terms of submissions, maps, things of that nature. Two, to better define and set out the standards that the planning board will use in evaluating those applications. And three, to eliminate some language in the first portion of the existing bylaw, which creates, in the mind of some, an issue with respect to the ability of the, or the, the authority of the, the building commissioner in zoning enforcement.
Okay.
That's one. Second one is somewhat related to that last point, the change to section seven, which is simply the enforcement section, it adds ten words or so, and, and says that not only, or it clarifies that the building commissioner has authority over enforcement of post-approval decision permit matters, so that, you know, board issues a special permit, the zoning enforcement would be up to the building commissioner once that is approved going forward. The bylaw that Roy has been working on is with respect to the ARPU, so-called district, and basically what that does is it allows that within a water, that, that a development can occur in a watershed protection district where it is now not permitted, provided that there is a fully approved and permitted wastewater processing plant in place on that site. So, it gives better opportunity for development, so long as the criteria, the current criteria of DEP for wastewater processing is satisfied. Last one is a proposed overlay for the Thatcher Street area down by the Brockton Line, and as you guys may know, over the years, that area has been developed, has a significant auto salvage operation, Everett's and so forth is down there. We were approached last summer, I think, with, by the attorney for several of the owners of the parcels, with a request, you know, would we be willing to get behind a, an overlay district, which, you know, would benefit ideally the town and the owners as well. From the town perspective, it recognizes, better recognizes what's there and codifies, you know, what can happen in the future in terms of dimensional height, buffer requirements, things of that nature. On the part of the owners, it makes what's a non-conforming use now, it basically makes them conforming uses with the overlay, so that in terms of sales of properties, financing of properties, things like that, much easier for them from those perspectives. So, that particular one, that's gone, that's been vetted by fire, police, and DPW and building, and all of their comments have been worked into the proposal that, the language that you have before you.
Okay.
There are those four. And I, I owe Charlie a map, which I...
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a map that LM and...
Just have to identify the, the various parcels, and I do have that, I'll submit, I'll get that tomorrow. Yep, just match it up to the zoning map.
Okay. So, I think our role here is just to...
To vote to submit all these articles back to the planning board. It's a weird system, but that's how the statute says. Whether it was Joe or Mary resident, or whether it's the planning board, everybody has to submit zoning articles to the board. The board then submits them to the planning board for their public hearing and recommendation at town meeting.
Okay.
All right, yeah, I'll make a motion.
All right, and I will second. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go forth and...
Thank you, schedule our public hearings.
Public hearings.
Yes, indeed. Thank you much.
I'm going to ask you to just stay right where you are for a couple minutes. We've got one other discussion, action item that we're going to discuss, and I'd like your input on it.
Sure.
All right, so, moving on, we're good?
Yep, go ahead.
So, this is a discussion on future road acceptance and road repair. So, the reason we, I requested for this to be on the agenda this evening is because outside of the questions about what the hell's going on on Route eighteen, this is probably the second most asked question I get during the course of my day.
What's that? Big building.
Two different pieces. Right, yeah, that comes up, Route eighteen, big building. Who's going in there, right? So, two different, two different pieces of this, right? Two different pieces, one being the roads getting accepted, which, you know, with the planning board and, and town council, we did, you know, a lot of work.
Last year, we did.
Yeah, we get to get, I don't know how many roads it was, but I think John told me it was over two hundred miles or something, that got back on, you know, got back on the town. So, the process continues. I did see some emails from, from Roy, I know he's away.
Yes.
I did stock up to the building department. But just to clarify that, if you could, kept, much different from what we did, like, say, over in Rolling Hills and Jacklins Place, and, and some of the others, was as far as the process goes with some of the other roads. And, you know, one that came up last week was Bennett Lane, is it?
Yeah.
Being so that, you know, it's an old extension from, what is, Plymouth Street?
It used to be Plymouth Street, and then when they redesigned Plymouth Street and built new Plymouth Street, then that became Bennett Lane.
Right, right. So, I mean, I don't know if, I don't, I mean, to put you on the spot, but if, if you do remember from, from any discussions you have, roads like that and, and some other ones that Roy had been talking about bringing on, they're missing certain aspects, as-bills, things of that nature. That, that's going to change the course that we can take. I can't just go through the same process that we did the last time. Is, is that, is that a fair statement? I mean, is that what you're, you're seeing right now, or...
I mean, I, I think, you know, the problem that, that seems to have arisen, and, you know, I can't talk to the, from the perspective of being a, a townie so much.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, from what I can gather, you know, the situation is that you had subdivisions that were developed, either the, you know, final plans were never pursued, or developers dissolved, went bankrupt, you know, whatever the case may be.
Right.
You never had final plans. That puts you in the situation that you were in, that, you know, was trying to be remedied partially, at least last year, with, with the mechanics of, you know, being able to get those roads accepted. Now, you have those roads accepted, and I know, I was talking to John a couple of weeks ago...
Yep.
About the whole dynamic of, well, some of those are in pretty serious disrepair and probably will eat up a good portion of the, you know, the expenditures that are going to be put on road repair this year. Uh, so, you know, he was talking about a plan, perhaps, of doing some things in two phases, you know, just going with a binder course and getting, you know, kind of somewhere toward acceptability. And then, you know, in next fiscal year or, or one after, being able to complete that work. Planning board now, I think, you know, we're in a much better position where those things are being tracked and are being, you know, required of, of developers. There are also in, you know, the, the bond situation is much different. A lot of the problem that developed, I think, here too, was the fact that you had one bonding company that went out of business, so there was nothing left for the town in the way of sureties, you know, to try to grab and, you know, complete that work on these different subdivisions. So, I think the whole process has been updated a lot. Um, and right now, as far as from the town's side, the planning board's side, I think it's, it's a good process, whether it be a tri-party agreement or cash bonds that are being taken, so that, you know, there is that security that if there are those problems going forward, that they can be addressed much more, much more readily.
Yeah, no, that's, that's exactly what, you know, needed to be done. And I knew that was the process. Do you have any, from the, from the planning board, and, you know, we can certainly wait and, and bring Roy in as well at the same time with, with the board or meet with the board. Do you know off the top of your head, like, what, some of the other roads? I don't know what we have left. I talked to John Haynes the other day too, said, you know, he's got a list of whatever roads haven't still been accepted. See, the big thing that myself and I think the, the board, when we first, you know, got wind of this whole thing was, you know, the liability aspect. Like, what happens, you know, when it's, is it a private road? Is it not a private road? I mean, there were so many questions that came about that our thought process was, yeah, the roads need to be fixed and some worse than others, but the liability needs to be taken away from the residents that probably are three times over, right? So, when they built that road in 1981, how many times did that house sold? So, the people that are sitting in there are completely different. And we've had this discussion many times, and, you know, we've moved past this and got it to town meeting with you guys' help. I guess I just want to, and maybe I'll bring it up at a track meeting as well, just continue to, you know, push that down the road, to figure out what, what do we have left and, and what do we got to do to get the rest of those.
I know Bennett Lane specifically will be on the agenda for the April 1st meeting.
Okay, great.
Uh, because I know there were emails that went back and forth, I think, last week.
All right.
Uh, so that will be on our agenda for the next, our next meeting.
Have the residents there been notified of that?
Uh, I don't know that, Carol. I can certainly check.
I gave them the number. They have talked to Ellen.
Okay.
Yeah, because its communication kind of went back and forth.
Okay, great.
And my understanding, I know Roy still has a list.
Yes.
And I think that's probably at about a dozen, if I'm understanding him correctly, that are left to be kind of remedied.
Right.
Um, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it definitely is something that, that still is in the consciousness of.
Yep.
Of the board.
I think it's a situation where, like, each one has to be handled individually. It's not that mass thing that we can do, but we don't want to let it slip, because we do have residents who live, you know, on those streets that are concerned and, you know, wondering when they're going to see their, you know, their roads fixed or.
Right. Well, that's the second part, right? So, we keep talking about, like, you know, trying to melt them together, like, and we said to them, look, we get you accepted and get the roads back on.
Right.
Doesn't mean that, you know, John's going to all of a sudden find $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 to come in and do what he has to do. Now, is there a course for doing that? Yes. And, you know, we're going to have to work with DPW because, you know, and that's basically what my, you know, my suggestion was, is, look, if it's, if it's a, a road that you're looking to be accepted, you know, you need to go talk, sit with the planning board, go to a meeting, come to select wherever, and start talking about, hey, what are we doing to push this along? But if it's a, a road that needs repair, it's completely in a different department, right? I mean, you could still, still talk to Charlie or Rebecca or one of us to say, where do I go from here? Because that's kind of what we, we do, right? We advocate to the different departments and helping that way. But, you know, we just sat here for what, 45 minutes with a school that's, you know, looking at a, a budget that, we're trying to figure out where we're going to get this money from. So, you know, you take that and also add on.
Well, and we talked about.
Million or so dollars.
Free cash and stabilization. If you spend free cash and stabilization on the operating budget, then you don't have that available for capital.
Right.
Which is where we get, let's say, $400,000 to repair roads.
Yep.
And, and we've, and we've made concessions, and every, every department, lucky for us, does work together and, you know, have communications together, because you can even go back to the, uh, the field. I mean, the, the, you know, I mean, we've taken money that was proposed to be in other directions because we, we found a need.
But a very good solution, you know, when all was said and not, you know, very creative one to everybody's credit.
Borrow any money.
You would, you would hope so, but to back ourselves up, right? Because I have heard, wait a second, I didn't know that this was going to change something else. Well, did you go and vote? What do you mean vote? Well, then, you know, I've got nothing to say to you.
Oh, well, we can.
So, that's kind of the deal. Like, it's, you know, we've got to go through those motions in order to put things in place, let people have their say. If they don't have a say or don't express their say, then there's, there's nothing we can, we can do from there, you know? Because I do go to these meetings, you go to the meetings, you know, residents that's usually come in here, Dan, I mean, how many people show up, right? So, if we really want to see some change, we really want to see things continue to move forward, we need, you know, more support at those, at those town meetings, at those voting polls, things of that nature, so you can really express that. So, you know, I, I got my soapbox.
I was going to say, don't fall.
Yeah. It's, it's, it bothers me to think that, you know, we sit, we spend as much time and effort as you guys do with the planning board, and, you know, it, it doesn't, it doesn't get expressed enough because the fact is, it's a small audience, you know? But we are trying to get it done, and I appreciate that, and we'll continue to.
No, it'll stay on the radar for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Have fun with your public hearings.
Yeah.
We're going to go into executive, but sir, were you here for a reason or are you?
No, he's on the finance.
You what?
No, he's on the finance.
Oh, you're, I'm sorry. I didn't even recognize you. We just appointed you a couple weeks ago.
Well, more than that.
No, this last year.
Has it been that long?
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll stop now. Never mind. I'm sitting here thinking, this poor guy's been sitting here all night long.
No.
Waiting to tell us something.
Well, he's on finance, so he's still the poor guy.
Uh, yeah, that's true. The, the poor guy thing still applies.
All right. Uh, I don't have, the only other thing I have, are we doing board?
We're doing executive.
Because I have nothing.
No, no, like.
I have no announcements or anything, no report. We're doing other.
Right, we're just going straight to.
Well, except for what?
Yeah, I have, I have one thing in my.
Oh, you have more to say?
I don't. I got something from, so Jean Marie needs some fencing or something?
Yes, at the landfill.
Okay, so.
I'm trying to work on putting together the bid package for that.
Okay, so is that what it is? So, what are they trying to do? She's trying to fence in the hole?
Yes.
I just happened to be up there on the Route 18 deal, and she mentioned, uh, so the landfill, the old bridge.
Bridge Street, yes. We have to put in new fencing because, for, for several different reasons, but basically we don't need people going on the property that should be on the property.
Right, okay. Oh, so you have to go out to, oh.
Dan?
The bid.
Are they looking for finance? I thought we provided that last.
You did. I need to put together the bid package.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure I knew what she was talking about. We should be almost, well, that's a conversation for her. We're going to be close to be, almost being done with that. It was like 30-year after its closed deal. I mean, we probably.
Well, except that we're also thinking of doing a solar project, and there's other aspects of it.
Oh, are there?
Yeah, and basically EPA won't, I mean, you're right, but EPA will not give us, like, the 30-year certificate and say, okay, we're done unless you're actually, everything's in good shape, and the fencing is one of those aspects of it.
Right, yeah, because I know a few years ago, we, they did the caps on the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Team theirs, but, all right.